Meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. I want to welcome all the citizens of Portsmouth and my council colleagues. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency Due to the Novo Coronavirus, Executive Order 51 on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 25th day of May, 2021, without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus. In accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102, each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker? Sir, you're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a virtual call meeting on May 11, 2021, a virtual regular meeting on May 11, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We can't hear him, man.
Yeah, I can't really hear.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council staff or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We now have come to the item of public hearing, item 21-152. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on FY 2021-22 Annual Action Plan.
Are there any registered speakers?
No speakers, sir.
Hearing none, then this public hearing is now closed, and City Council will vote on this item under the City Manager's report.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to unfinished business, item 21-129. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Division 1 of Article 5 of Chapter 12 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Public Procurement Program to facilitate participation in procurement transactions by small businesses and businesses owned by women and minorities by making several amendments to Section 12-176 and to amend and reordain Article 5 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, City Manager by adding a new section 2-168 regarding participation by minority and women-owned businesses in economic development programs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that ordinance. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this item?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Godalde Yutrowski.
Mr. Godalde Yutrowski, are you there, sir?
I don't see him.
Mr. Yutrowski, are you there, sir?
I don't see him. I don't see him on there.
Okay, we'll move right along, then. Before we get into discussion by council members, I want to ask the city attorney, Mr. Stromberg, please to make some additional comments before we get into the discussion.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Back in 2004, the General Assembly of Virginia adopted 15.2-965.1, which provided that where there's evidence of disparity in the uses of different types of businesses, the chief executive officer, and that's key here, the chief executive officer of the local governing entity shall be authorized and encouraged to require implementation of appropriate enhancement and remedial measures consistent with prevailing law. As you'll note, that statute allowed the chief executive officer to implement such programs. And that was back in 2004. Of course, the chief executive officer is the city manager. Our code section gives that power to the procurement officer, or gave that power to the procurement officer under 12-176. One of the changes we're making, or council would be making, would be that the city manager would be in charge, even though the procurement officer would still handle every specific transaction, procurement transaction. The city manager, under the amendment to our code, would be in charge of such remedial programs and would report to city council on those remedial programs. So that's one change. That's a very important change that's being made. The statute, the local statute, again, it's 12-176, is a remedial statute. And in talking with the city council, it was clear that you all wanted a remedial statute. And so the definition was tightened a little bit for just minority and women-owned businesses. There were small businesses. There was some language about veterans. It really probably wasn't appropriate in that place. And the disparity studies don't show any disparity for veterans and small businesses is just too large of a group to even see a disparity. So we tightened the local ordinance to include minorities and women. And so that's being done. And as I said, the city manager will be in charge of that and will report to city councils or also get reports from their department heads as to how things are going as far as remedial programs. And lastly, in order for us to do this, we have to show that there is a disparity, and that is done through disparity studies. Ours is getting a little old. It's about seven, or maybe a little older than seven years. And so we'll be contracting, the city manager's office will be contracting for a new disparity study so that we can implement these remedial programs and allow our city manager to run those programs. Does anybody have any questions?
Attorney Stromberg?
Yes, sir.
In addition to Section 12-176, can you also elaborate on the addition of Section 20-168?
Yeah, and that's the section that actually requires the city manager. I should have cited the actual statute. I sort of combined them. But that's the one that establishes a program for the purpose of implementing remedial or enhancement programs and gives the city manager the authority to do that. And so those two in combination should allow a really robust program, remedial program, to correct past discrimination and to prevent future discrimination.
And just so the public knows, also, the Section 12-176, that deals more with procurement contracts. And I think where our city is being a little more progressive, maybe than others, is that Section 2-168 deals also with economic development.
That's correct. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. You're correct, Dr. Whitaker. And that's a really, you know, broad ordinance, which is good. It will apply to EDA and the city.
Right. And could you explain the significance of either Attorney Miller, the significance of the compelling government interest that is mentioned in the statutes about the discrimination being a compelling government?
Yeah. In order, you have to show that it's a compelling interest. It's under the strict scrutiny guideline. And so you have to show that there is a disparity, and the way you do that is through a disparity study. And the amended statute says that evidence of statistically significant disparities or discrimination in the availability and utilization of minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses shall constitute a compelling government interest. So we state it right in the statute. So it's an airtight, and I give a lot of credit to my deputy, Jeff Miller, who did a wonderful job with this. This is, as Dr. Whitaker said earlier, is sort of groundbreaking and could be a model for other municipalities to use. We think Richmond uses something similar, but we're not aware of many other localities that use this type of language.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Council members, also, Mr. Godalde Yutrowski is on the line and available to speak at this time.
Mr. Godalde Yutrowski, sir? Are you with us?
You need to unmute, Mr. Godalde Yutrowski.
Thank you.
Are you with us, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, and you have five minutes, sir.
I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, council members, and other neighbors, as somebody who has supported the concept of minority business, of minority business programs, both for the Portsmouth schools and for the city, I'm always interested in changes that are proposed for the for the enabling legislation. And I had some concerns that I'm feeling better about after the city attorney's explanation than when I was looking at it in print. What I was afraid the language was saying was that the city manager was essentially the administrator of this program and that it could not be delegated to someone else. And that caused me some heartburn because the city manager, by job description, is responsible for every aspect of the operation of the city. So why would there need to be language that specifically designated him or her as the administrator? But after the explanation tonight, I see that essentially it's under the auspices of the city manager and you're not prohibiting, in this case, her from having someone else override the program just emphasizing that she has direct oversight and responsibility to you over results. So I'm good with that. And I appreciate the city attorney's explanation of why the other language relative to small businesses and disabled veterans and the like were lined out of the ordinance. I am assuming, then, that there are small business provisions elsewhere within the city code or state code so that we do have some way of giving small businesses a let up in terms of contracting or submitting proposals for city contracts. Because now, it would cause me some heartburn if, for example, Amazon were to become a minority-owned business or a woman-owned business and then be given an advantage under this program in competing for city contracts with smaller minority or women-owned businesses, if you understand my concern. So my hope is that your wording hasn't facilitated a pathway for some giant corporation by change of boots at the top to edge out small businesses in competing for contracts within the city. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, I believe we are ready for the question. Is there a motion and a second?
Yes, sir. Would you like for me to call the roll?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
We did, we did, we do a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We're now moving to our next item, use permits. Item 21-140. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution pertaining to the item?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 2104, to the L. Luis Lucas Trust to operate a residential drug and alcohol treatment facility at 1819 Elm Avenue, Tax Parcel 0069-0180.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, were there any speakers for this item?
No, sir. No speakers.
Is there any further discussion amongst my colleagues of council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Abstain.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Madam Clerk, we have come to item B. And would you please read the resolution we're considering for item B?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 2105, to JRF Ship Repairs LLC to operate a light manufacturing business consisting of a metal fabrication shop and warehouse at 3409 George Washington Highway, Tax Parcel 0385-0030.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second on this item?
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, were there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Hearing none, then is there any discussion from my colleagues on council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Madam Clerk, we are now at item 21-140, rezoning. And would you please read the rezoning item, item Z21-01?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Wait, what's going on?
Cause all, he muted now.
Okay. And we are on item?
The rezoning item?
Okay, gotcha. Z2101, Victory Village, Stephen R. Romine, on behalf of Economic Development Authority, is requesting to rezone approximately 56.916 acres at 3560 Victory Boulevard, Zero Campus Drive, Zero Victory Boulevard, Zero Village Way, 111 Campus Drive, Zero Freedom Avenue, 271 Freedom Avenue, 175 Freedom Avenue, 3606 Victory Boulevard, and, excuse me, to an entertainment overlay?
Oh, let me hit you back. I'm on mute, but let me hit you back. I think I'm about to, I think I'm about to be in this.
Sir, you're not on mute.
We're not on mute.
We can hear you, sir. You're not on mute, sir.
To an entertainment overlay district within the high-intensity mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval deferred from the May 11, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are in need of a motion?
I want to make a motion to defer until the next meeting. The NAACP reached out to the casino people, Rush Gaming, regarding the cumulative study to see what the impact on the community was, and they never reached back to them. So I want to make a motion to defer until they get that to the next meeting.
Ma'am, I don't think that's our business to do that. I move for a motion to approve.
Second.
We, we have a motion on the table.
Well, I made a, I've been.
Wait, wait, we have a motion that has been made to approve.
And we have a second.
Council members, we received a motion to defer. It did not receive a second. We have an amended motion to approve.
Well, I don't think we got time to approve, to get a second because the second, the motion came in right after I said it. So we didn't even ask for a second or give any seconds for us to get the second.
Can you finish, please, ma'am?
I was just reiterating what we have on the books right now. We have a motion to defer to the next meeting, and we received an amended motion to approve that received a second.
We will proceed with the motion that received the second?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just for a point, just for a point of order, are you going to recognize the first motion?
I recognize the first motion. It was not seconded.
You, there was no opportunity because I was going to second it, and then another motion you took before asking for a second.
Sir, I asked for a motion and a second. I did, I did, sir. Sir, let me, let me, let me finish my thought before you make a comment, please. I asked for a motion and a second. And, and what occurred, what occurred was another motion, then amended motion came on the floor. I cannot determine whether or not, when you're going to make a second.
Right. And you're not parliamentarian. So I'm going to ask if the attorney, who is supposed to oversee parliamentarian procedure for council, if he would give some direction on this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney, can you give us some direction, sir?
I think the motion deferred does take precedent. And there was not an opportunity to second. I believe you do have to allow for the opportunity for a second on the motion to defer. That takes precedent. And then there could be a motion to amend after that on the motion to defer. But I think he's entitled to second it if he wanted to second that deferral.
Thank you, City Attorney. Thank you, that. So we have a motion on the floor for deferral and a second. Madam Clerk?
Sir, we have a motion on the floor to defer to the next meeting and a second, and we received an amended motion to approve and a second. I will defer to the city attorney.
Mr. City Attorney, you have the floor.
There couldn't be a motion to amend if the first motion wasn't seconded, but there wasn't a chance to second the motion when that amended motion came in. Give me one second. Can we, let me just check one one source I have. Can you hang on one second?
We will, we will, we will hold for you to bring back the response, sir.
We need some music on occasions like this. Some smooth, soothing music.
I assure you, Council Member Moody, I will not do the singing.
Nor will I. That just leaves five other colleagues.
Well, I stopped singing a long time ago.
Not me.
I believe the motion to defer was entitled to, for a second, if somebody offered a second. Once that is on the floor, then Councilwoman Burke's motion to amend could then be heard, and that would be heard before the deferral motion.
So you have the motion to amend, so we will hear the motion to amend, and then we will go back to the deferral motion if that motion passes? If that, correct me if I'm wrong, if that? If that motion passes, if that, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if that, if the motion that was made by Councilwoman Lucas Burke passes, we do not go back to, or do we go back to the deferral motion?
You, you wouldn't, but you do need to take a second on the deferral right now, if there's a second. And then you can entertain Lisa Lucas Burke's motion for an amendment to that.
Okay.
That's what I had said earlier.
Okay, and we did have a motion on the deferral and a second. Did we, uh, Doctor Whitaker, I believe you seconded the motion, sir?
Yes.
And then we had an amended motion that was presented by Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so that is the precedent that we're moving in. We have a motion by Councilwoman Lucas Burke and a second.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor.
Hold on, sir. Hold on a second. Go, go, go ahead, Doctor Whitaker.
Just, just a, um, just a point of order. There, there was no motion to amend. There was just a new motion put on the floor. I think you're making it more difficult than it needs to be. Why don't you just take a vote on the motion to defer and then take a vote on your next motion?
Sir, I, I, I would agree with you, um, um, and, and I think you asked for the parliamentary procedure to be on the floor, so that's why we did it. So if we wanna, if we wanna make it easy, sir, um, we, we can do that. We can take either one. But I think in parliament, in parliamentary procedure, I believe our parliament, parliamentarian addressed that.
Right, he did. And so the point I was just making, point of order, was that there was no motion to amend. It was just a new motion placed. She did not make a motion to amend.
Oh, that, then I correct. Well, in all honesty, we both had our hands raised at the same time. Neither Vice Mayor Barnes allowed the mayor an opportunity to recognize either of us, so he just went in first, so I just went right behind him. So if we have to do it properly, I am in the motion that we approve the agenda item. And I believe Councilman Moody seconded.
So we have an amended motion and a second, and we will proceed with that motion. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor, for clarification on this item, you have speakers. So if it's the wish to move forward to approve, you may want to hear your speakers first.
Very well. Would you like to call, what would you call the first speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mister Neil Bloom. I'm not sure if he's on the line or not. I don't see him on the line. We'll go down. Uh, Mister Randy Royal is on the line.
Mister Royal, are you with us, sir? Mister Royal?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you, Mister Royal. Thank, thank you for, for, for coming to our meeting, sir. Uh, you have five minutes.
I will not take five minutes. I'll be very brief. I'm the civil engineer for this project, and I would just like to, you to know that I'm available to answer any questions about traffic, civil engineering, anything whatsoever for the site. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mister Royal. Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
The next speaker I have is Mister Stephen Romine. And I'm not sure if he, there he is.
Mister Romine, thank you, thank you for joining the meeting. We, you have five minutes, sir.
I will not take five minutes, Mister Mayor, but good evening, Mayor Glover and members of city council. For the record, I'm Steve Romine, local attorney with the address of two 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 Central Park Avenue, Suite seventeen hundred, Virginia Beach. Uh, tonight, I represent Portsmouth Gaming Holdings, and I'm also here on behalf of the Economic Development Authority. What you have in front of you, just to refresh everyone's memory, is a request to rezone approximately fifty six point nine one six acres along Victory Boulevard adjacent to the interstate to an entertainment overlay district within the M U H zoning district. Um, I'm not gonna be redundant since we already had the public hearing on May eleventh, uh, but I would ask that, uh, you move for approval tonight, and I'll stand by for questions, and I hope Mister Bloom will have an opportunity to join shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have another speaker?
I do. Um, Mister Michael Tobin. I'm not sure if he's on the line.
Mister Tobin, sir, are you with us?
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I just got a text from Mister Tobin. He said they're being admitted into the meeting to speak. They're not being admitted into the meeting to speak. I guess they're in a waiting room and are not able to get in some, for some reason. So I just raised that.
Thank, thank you, sir, for that information. We will try to figure out what is going on and, 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 and connect them so that they may have an opportunity to speak before council.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Council members, the next person is, we're gonna go down to Miss, um, Delcino Miles. I see her on the line.
Miss Miles, are you with us, ma'am?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you for joining us. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, um, Mister Mayor and members of council. I have a couple of letters to read, one from the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. Um, it says, uh, Dear Mayor Glover and members of the Portsmouth City Council, thank you for allowing me to provide written comments on the opportunity before you today. As the President and C E O of the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, I wanted to share my thoughts on the economic importance of the Portsmouth Casino Project continuing to move forward. The Workforce Council has been following closely the opportunities that the casino would bring to the city and the region, uh, from the thirteen hundred plus, uh, permanent jobs and hundreds of construction jobs that will be available for Portsmouth residents, to increased tax revenue to support schools, to the potential to spur further economic development. And the Portsmouth, uh, casino has a potential for all of that and more. The Workforce Council looks forward to continuing to work with the city as the project moves from concept to reality. Thank you for this opportunity. Sincerely, Sean Avery, President, C E O. I'd like to say that the Hampton Roads, uh, Workforce Council was a significant partner, uh, with us when we did our job fairs. We've had two job fairs where we've had over one thousand, um, uh, participants in those events. And I have one more letter, uh, from the Cavalier Manor United Civic League. It says, to Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of the Portsmouth City Council, uh, City Manager Jones and staff. Um, we, uh, it says, though we, the members of the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor do hereby provide notice and approval of the league's, uh, endorsement of the entertainment district, which will commence with the, uh, construction of the Rivers Casino Portsmouth. We have, uh, discussed the proposal as well as the gaming referendum, which was overwhelmingly approved by a sixty seven percent margin across the city. The vote in our community reflected the, uh, more than two to one, uh, support for the project. They have been, um, um, they have been presentations virtually as well as, uh, in person, uh, provided to the community throughout the past year. Uh, we, uh, feel our concerns as far as traffic, public safety, uh, new jobs and community, uh, involvement, uh, that will, turn us white here, eyes getting old, mayor, uh, that will directly impact, uh, our neighborhood have and will be furtherly addressed by the city and developer. Our leadership has already been contacted and visited by the developer. We look forward to this major investment in our city and community. It is also our hope that city leaders and, oh, will also make the, uh, most effective utilization of the millions of tax dollar revenues that will be generated with the addition of temporary and permanent jobs that will improve our workforce. Knowing that Tidewater Community College were included from the very beginning is also validation that it will be an asset to our community. We look forward to working with Rush Street Gaming and ensuring that they live up to their contract and ways that, that can work with Cavalier Manor community in making the entertainment district and the casino a major attraction and enhancement to the Victory Crossing Corridor city and region. Sincerely, United, uh, Civic League of Cavalier Manor, Ray A. Smith, President. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you today.
Thank you, Miss Miles. And Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
We do. Um, I see Mister Bloom has come on. Mister Royal, if you could please cut off your camera. And if anyone else that is on the line to speak, if you would please keep your camera off into your call. Mister Neil Bloom?
Yes.
Mister Bloom, no, wel- welcome to our meeting, sir. You, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you all. Uh, I'm Neil Bloom, uh, Chairman of, uh, Rush Street Gaming, and thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, talk to you for a few minutes today. Uh, we are very excited to have the opportunity to develop what we believe will be the first and finest destination casino in Virginia on a great site in Portsmouth. Um, you picked us and entered into an agreement with us after you did a lot of due diligence, and you picked us in part because of our strong track record. Uh, we're very proud to say that we have been one of the leading developers of regional casinos in the United States, probably the leading since the Great Recession, and have developed six very successful properties, casino developments, in addition to the, uh, uh, sixty billion dollars of prime real estate that we have developed and acquired, uh, over several years. The host communities that we have developed our casinos with have been extremely pleased and happy uh, with the jobs, the tax revenue, the economic development, and our interface and cooperate, cooperation with the communities. Our goal in this case is to exceed the expectations of the city council and the residents of Portsmouth, sixty seven percent of whom voted to move forward with a casino, uh, on this site. Uh, to give you some idea of what we're gonna develop, I hope you have seen the renderings and are pleased with them. So let me tell you a little bit about the project. The project is gonna cost over six hundred million dollars, plus the cost of the hotel. And the project, the casino project, will include a casino, a sportbook, uh, restaurants, bars, live music events, uh, outdoor events, and I should tell you that our sportbooks that we've developed have been the leading ones, uh, in the markets. A hotel will be part of the project. Jobs are obviously critically important, and we will create thirteen hundred good paying jobs at the casino alone, plus additional jobs at the hotel. We've had two job fairs, uh, and two thou- and a thousand people have shown up at the two fairs to give you an idea of the interest in the community for the jobs that we're gonna create. We will also have significant minority participation, not only in the jobs, uh, but, uh, in other factors such as, uh, vendors, uh, contractors, et cetera. And the jobs that we're gonna create are high paying jobs, and particularly, we've had significant minority participation in some of the highest paying jobs, like dealers. We will have significant, as I mentioned, uh, M B E participation in the contracting and development and working with our vendors. We will generate a lot of taxes for Portsmouth. We estimate the taxes will be about sixteen point three million dollars a year, and those taxes are, are in part from additional, uh, revenue sharing that we agreed to in the development agreement, which was not otherwise required in the statute. And of course, it includes the participation with the state that is in the statute. Uh, we will have minority ownership in the project itself, who will be owners of the property with us. And importantly, we will be a catalyst to bring significant economic development. Project itself, who will be owners of the property with us. Uh, the city is not providing us with any funds or incentives, incentives. Um, we will work with local community groups. We've already started. We've given, uh, twenty five thousand dollars to two chair, individual charities each already. And as soon as you approve the zoning and the other matters before you, we will start working on the site work, even before, with our own capital, even before we have final approval from the gaming, uh, uh, board or the, it's the lottery, and they have already approved us and found us suitable to start operating online sport betting, which we are currently doing.
Mi- 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 Mister Bloom, you, you have about thirty seconds, sir.
Okay, I'll just finish up by telling you that we are very excited to get started. We're confident this is gonna be a terrific project that the community and you all will really love. Uh, we can't wait to get started, and we're confident that this will be the first and the finest cas- uh, casino project in the state. And thank you for listening to me, and I hope you approve this project to move forward today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Mister Michael Tobin.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm just here to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Miss Lynette Lee?
Hi.
Miss Lee, how, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Sure. Hi, my name's Lynette Lee. I'm the Director of Internal Audit with Rivers Casino Philadelphia, and I'm here basically to speak on behalf of the company, um, and how wonderful this organization is. I've been with Rivers Casino, uh, since May third, two thousand and ten. Um, I was hired as the Compliance Manager, um, helped get the casino up and running, brand new. Um, there was dirt on the ground, um, wrote all of our internal controls, worked with, uh, was liaison between the casino and the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. Um, worked as the Compliance Manager for about five years, and then was promoted to Director of Compliance in January of two thousand and fifteen. Um, and then recently in July of twenty, uh, July of two thousand and nineteen, transferred into internal audit, and now I'm the Director of Internal Audit. Um, so eleven years, um, just celebrated eleven years with the company. Completely amazing, um, just the way that, uh, we, you know, hire within, we promote within. Um, you know, we, we, we really try to, um, you know, uplift, uplift our employees, uh, motivate them to be the best that they can be. Uh, we also do a lot of community service within the, uh, around the Philadelphia area, um, and we encourage our employees to also participate. Um, Rush Street Gaming, from the corporate office to our leadership team, to all of our employees, um, truly our family, um, just a family oriented, um, organization, and I just, you know, this is just an amazing organization, hands down. Um, I also worked in the Atlantic City Market, um, years ago, but this is by far the best company that I've ever worked for. Um, and it, from bottom on up, anyone will be able to tell you that.
Thank you, ma'am, so much for your, for your comments.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Do we have another?
Yes, sir. Doctor Maria Constance?
Doctor Constance, ma'am, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Good evening, Mister Mayor and City Council. As President of Tidewater Community College, I'm speaking this evening to offer my support of the rezoning for the entertainment district in Portsmouth. It is our hope at T C C that you will approve the rezoning application. The casino will have a positive impact on the community, which will include more jobs, increased tax revenue, expanded community partnerships, which would indeed attract even more development and opportunities into the area. At Tidewater Community College, we stand ready to provide the academic and workforce training needed to serve this community. We have a number of programs in place to meet the workforce demands, and we anticipate that we anticipate the casino will generate. This includes skilled labor programs such as welding or construction management, academic programs such as culinary arts and gaming, and so many others. The college's close proximity to the casino will serve to facilitate not only the academic and workforce needs, but also to offer a place to provide for job fairs and other types of community engagements. College staff has been engaged with the planning team. College staff has been engaged with the planning team from day one, and we look forward to continuing a strong relationship on behalf of our citizens. So I just want to thank you for a positive decision to rezone the site in support of the Entertainment District. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Ms. Melanie Shaw. Hopefully, I said that right.
Ms. Shaw?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Shaw, and I am the CEO and President of Maven Inc., a 100% minority-owned and operated firm in Pennsylvania. My working relationship started with Rush Street Gaming back in 2004. At that time, I was a very small and pretty much a startup business, and what I got from my relationship with Rush Street was an opportunity to grow and build capacity for my firm. My job and my role was to make sure that the Black community understood that there were a multitude of jobs at different levels, that there were opportunities on the construction side, and that there would be opportunities afterwards. Hospitality is one of the few places where you can have a high school education and start in a job that pays above minimum wage and still grow and have a career path. I had the distinct honor of working with clergy, of working with other politicos, of working with elected officials that had concerns about a casino coming to the city. They were more supportive after they understood not only that there would be many jobs, but that there was a career path, but most importantly, it was going to be wages that could take care of families. We had so many folks and families that were working poor in the city of Philadelphia, and it was hitting our Black community hardest of all. And so, being able to work and get them to build, become partners with us, we were able to address a multitude of concerns that without that type of commitment from an organization like Rush Street, but also a commitment to partnering with the long-term institutional organizations so that they could be a part of the growth and the wealth that got created, made for the casino to be one of the best in the state. They were able to even go on and get another casino in another part of Pennsylvania. I was able to help other Black businesses to see what types of opportunities existed. They didn't know, you know, that there's flowers, there's napkins, there's entertainment, there's marketing materials, there's all kinds of products and services that was going to give those small businesses that hadn't had a chance to work with large organizations an opportunity to do that. So we developed a procurement process that engaged Black businesses in a significant way. We also did the same thing with the organizations, with a number of workforce training organizations, so that the kinds of jobs that didn't exist, because we didn't have casinos in Pennsylvania, they were able to get trained for. You heard from Lynette earlier, there are a lot of, there are a lot of, a significant number of our workforce, or the Rush Street workforce, that has been with them all the way from the beginning. Most hospitality institutions or organizations experience extreme turnover. That's not the case with this organization, and I think that's extremely important to point out. That has to do with not only how they treat and take care of their employees, but it also has to do with the commitment that they made to Black businesses, because those Black businesses have family members and relatives that come to that casino and support it. And so, the wealth is spread around, and it's been very good for the community. Many of you saw what that community looked like before the casino was there, and if you look at it now, you wouldn't even know it was the same desolate area that it was before. So, the housing stock has gone up, there has been additional businesses and industries that have come into the area, so that it is a destination as opposed to just a single property. And again, our diversity numbers on the procurement side have stayed high, probably one of the best in the state. And so, I would urge you to be supportive of this opportunity, and assure you that you would have nothing but a partner in more ways than just bringing a casino to you, but being a corporate member, partner in your community. Thank you. And so, I would urge you...
Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
We do, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Joseph Chabetti, Chabetta.
Mr. Chabetta?
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have five minutes, sir.
I just wanted to make myself available for any questions that the council may have, based on meeting you folks, and just wanted to be on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Reverend Milton Blunt.
Reverend Blunt, are you on the line, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm right here.
Thank you for joining us, sir. You have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir, to our Vice Mayor, Mr. Barnes, and to the members of City Council, and to our City Manager. I'm delighted to be able to blend my voices in with others as I lend support to this effort of rezoning of this Entertainment District in the city of Portsmouth. I am the Reverend Milton Blunt. I serve as Senior Pastor of the Newman Oliver Baptist Church, as well as President of Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Steering Committee, as well as President of Church and Community in Action. And I'm thinking and certainly excited about the potential of great jobs coming to the city of Portsmouth, also about the expanding of Portsmouth tax revenue, in addition to Portsmouth being, becoming, or being a destination point. And so, certainly, I give support to the Rush Group and to the efforts, and call upon the City Council to favorably vote for the zoning that is necessary in order to make this project come to fruition and move swiftly. Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Pastor.
Our next speaker is Mr. Marcus Sims.
Mr. Mayor, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sims. You have five minutes. Welcome to our meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all the members of the council. I just wanted to come in today and just speak on, or speak in favor of moving the casino project forward. As some people may have heard from other times I've addressed the council, coming back to the Portsmouth, to the city of Portsmouth, specifically to the Camden and Mainland Neighborhood, I felt like in the last few years, it's felt like Portsmouth has kind of been out of the loop. There's been an arms race for growth in the area in terms of increasing new residents, increasing tax dollars, and it's kind of felt like Portsmouth has been kind of on the wayside. But projects like this are the things that make me proud to be a resident of Portsmouth. And I know that with the number of jobs they're talking about creating, this is the type of thing that Portsmouth needs to continue to move forward, to continue to be respected throughout, not just the area, but throughout the entire Commonwealth of Virginia and hopefully the nation. So, I won't take up too much of your time this evening. I just hope that as we move forward in this petition for you gets the necessary support and approval that it needs, because if anything, the city of Portsmouth needs this maybe more so than anything else. All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Our final speaker on this item is Mr. Mark Adelik Yatrowski.
Mr. Yatrowski, are you there, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and other neighbors. So, when I spoke to you two weeks ago on this particular matter, I detailed for you the reasons that I feel the proposed sighting of the casino and the entertainment zone would be better shifted to downtown River Edge part of our city. It would provide some synergy with existing infrastructure that would dovetail with an entertainment zone concept, and also help us do the redevelopment of civic assets that are currently in that space. When council voted to defer this matter, I'd hoped that some of those arguments had resonated with members of council, and that they were looking at renegotiating the sighting of this facility. As I said, I have opposed the casino from the get-go, from back in the days when the proposal was riverboat gambling. I continue to oppose it, but unlike certain of my fellow Americans who don't acknowledge actual results of elections, I do. And clearly, the vote was lopsided. Of course, there was a lot of money pumped into Public Relations Campaign, including those two sizable charitable contributions, which were made in a very public way, and major advertising, flyers, mailers, and so on, to influence the outcome. But, you know, with that said, the vote was the vote. And so, I'm not here to oppose a casino in Portsmouth, just to oppose the occupation of what I consider a very prime piece of real estate for us, adjacent to Tidewater Community College, that could be used for better purposes, and the reuse of River Edge property currently occupied by civic infrastructure. Consequently, that is the basis for my opposition to this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Members of council, is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I got a question for Mr. Tobin. Is the minority stake, the ownership, is it still 5%?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
The minority stake in the casino, is it still 5%?
It's 5% or a threshold dollar amount.
And what's the process or the procedure for local businessmen to, of minority descent, when not, to invest in this casino? I don't know if we ever went into details about that.
We have a group that I'm not part of, I have to apologize, that's actually working on the specifics. I'm trying to think. Dulcino, do you have a better answer than that for Councilman Woodard?
Ma'am, you're muted.
You're muted, Dulcino.
Sorry, it's a little better. Yes, thank you for the question, Councilman Woodard. Yes, we have interviews, individuals, pardon, we've been focused on Portsmouth business leaders who've expressed an interest, and yes, it's 5% or $5 million, whichever is greater. And so, we're interested in, so any of the Portsmouth-based business leaders, we've been talking to them, and we've been talking to them since January, quite frankly. So, the process is just, we've identified them, we've asked various business leaders for names, and we followed up on those names, and we've been interviewing, and then the next process is they fill out paperwork, they're vetted, because this is a heavily regulated industry, so they're vetted. And so, we're still looking for that Councilman Woodard, so we work, you know, for, we want to start with Portsmouth, because that's the commitment, we're Portsmouth residents now, and so, that's who we've been talking to, leaders that have a vested interest in Portsmouth already, either they have, they're there, they have a significant business presence in Portsmouth.
Right, I understand, but being that this is an investment opportunity, is it really an opportunity if everyone didn't get a chance to be a part of this particular venture? You know, I mean, pretty much, I think I have that same information, but, you know, there's some people that may have received information late, or like I heard you say before, these people have been selected. Is that a fair process of...
The process is still open. It's not closed. There's, so we don't, we don't have a deadline there, so...
So, where is the information needed for participation?
Did you ask, where is it?
Where is it? What's the information needed for participation?
A lot of that information is on our website, riverscasinoofportsmouth.com, and certainly they can contact me. My information is available as well to anyone interested in being considered for, as a partner and investor in this project. So, the website does have some of that information to, in terms of next steps, and who to contact, and to be interviewed, and the paperwork that needs to be filled out, and that sort of thing. So, the website has been live for months, and so that information is readily there.
Okay. And I have one more other question, because, you know, as this process continues, and the public, their concerns are about crime. And my thing is, I have visited another site of you guys, and it was a garage, and it was surface parking as well. What is the plan of action for you guys to keep people safe in such large surface parking? I mean, we know where we're at, and pretty much, we want to make sure that, you know, people can come to a safe environment, you know. I think I seen in Philly, it was patrols, well, what I want to say, a security guard patrolling in a vehicle, and there was some at the door, but for such large surface parking that'd be coming to Portsmouth, I mean, it gotta be a better plan of action.
I'll defer to either Mike or Joe to discuss the security with this, and let me clarify one point with Neil. He did, out of his enthusiasm, said $600 million project. It's still a $300 million, north of $300 million, but not that far north, so just wanted to make that clarity on that statement. But, yeah, this is a 300-plus million-dollar project, so there will be security, there are cameras, they have a top-notch security system. Joe Chabetta, he's on the line, he can share the details of that without giving away too much, but we have uniformed staff on the property that also monitors the property, and we have cameras. So, Joe, I'll defer to you in terms of the process for the security, to ensure that our visitors and our team members are safe.
Thank you, Dulcino. Councilman Woodard, your question is valid. We think about this every day, it's what we do every day. Having a safe casino is paramount to our success, so we have the patrols that you saw in Philadelphia. We also will be working closely with our surveillance team to have plenty of cameras. We'll have the blue safety phones all over the surface parking, as well as, we'll be as well-lit as zoning will allow us to be. We have surface parking in all of our casinos. We have large areas of surface parking, and with our patrols, with the lighting, with the opportunity to have the cameras, and then partnering with local PD to be a presence, we have been able to keep a very safe environment for our team members and for our customers. More importantly, any customer that feels unsafe will always be offered an escort from our security team. We do that all the time. We have very, very few requests, but when they are requested, we make sure that someone can feel comfortable getting to their car. Safety is the biggest concern for us. If you don't have a safe casino, you don't have a successful casino, and we work at it every day. It's not just a plan that we put on paper. We are considered, we are thinking about it, and we are always improving. And we constantly take what we've learned at other properties and apply it to other or new properties. So, I hope that helps you answer your question.
Right. I mean, like I said, I know this about land use, but I just wanted to get an update while you guys were on the line. Just some information pertaining to this particular project going forward. Thank you.
Well, and if I may too, we have done studies around our existing casinos and found that once the casinos were opened with security force on property, that crime has actually gone down in the neighborhood.
Thank you once again.
Councilwoman Lucas Burks, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for all of the speakers who presented tonight. And I believe it was Mr. Mike Tobin, or maybe someone else, that mentioned that there was a traffic study that was done. Are there any results to that, or anything that we could update the viewers here?
I didn't mention it tonight, but you are correct. There is a traffic study done. It was completed last year. And Randy, if you're still available on the call, I can't see if you are. Can you give Councilman Lucas Burke an update?
Certainly. I'm still on the call. The camera's not working, but we did what's called a VDOT 527 study, which is much, much larger than a typical traffic study. It looks at the intersection impacts. So, we looked at 264 Victory Boulevard, McLean, et cetera. Worked with VDOT on it and came up with improvements that we are incorporating with the project. Further, we're going to be doing what's called an IAR, an Interchange Access Report, which is an even bigger study. It's on behalf of the city. It's not necessary for the casino. It's necessary for future development of the entertainment district. And that is going to be looking at numerous intersections on 264 as to what needs to be done in the future. So, we've done a lot with traffic engineering on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Madam Clerk, we're ready to call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Barnes. Sir, you're muted.
Could we make it clear what we are voting for right now?
You're voting to approve this item.
As the amendment to the deferral?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no?
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody? Sir, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved.
And Madam Clerk, we're at the next item, 21-140, use permit. And with item D, which is UP item 21-06. And Madam Clerk, would you read, please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Victory Village, Stephen Romine, on behalf of Economic Development Authority, is requesting a use permit for a casino gaming establishment on the approximately 38.74 acre property at 3560 Victory Boulevard, Zero Campus Drive, Zero Victory Boulevard, Zero Village Way, 111 Campus Drive, and 3606 Victory Boulevard in the high-intensity mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions deferred from your May 11, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The applicant has 10 minutes to present the item. Are you on the line, sir?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Glover and members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Romine. I'm a local attorney with an address of 222 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach. I represent Portsmouth Gaming Holdings and the Economic Development Authority in this use permit request for casino gaming establishment. The request for UP 2106, it's actually for 38.74 acres of the 56.916 acre Entertainment District that's been shown on the plat that you saw in your packet for Z 2101, what we just approved. As you recall, the zoning ordinance was amended last year in September. In September, City Council established the Entertainment Overlay District and also allowed a casino gaming establishment within the MUH zoning district. Portsmouth Gaming Holdings was named the city's preferred national developer. Portsmouth Gaming Holdings entered into an agreement with the Economic Development Authority as well. On November 3, the citizens of Portsmouth resoundingly voted in favor of the referendum by 2/3's vote. In December, we were able to rezone the properties to the MUH district. And you just took action immediately, to this action, on the rezoning of the Entertainment District. The casino phase will be on 38.74 acres. It will include the casino, restaurants, the event center, parking, and related amenities. Let me just state, the Entertainment District has something for everyone. As we indicated on May 11 at the public hearing, the casino will offer gaming, will offer indoor and outdoor event center, and will have dining, entertainment, and ultimately, a hotel. We stated earlier that Rivers Casino Portsmouth will be a great place to work. It will create more than 1,400 construction-related jobs and 1,300 permanent jobs, including careers as table game dealers, accountants, IT personnel, food servers, marketing executives, security officers, bartenders, slot machine technicians, and so much more. Rivers offers excellent compensation packages, job training, and advancement opportunities. They're very proud of their efforts to work collaboratively with all team members. All Rush Street Gaming properties have been voted a best place to work or a top workplace. Rivers Casino provides a nurturing, diverse, and inclusive environment, and is committed to equal opportunity employment. Thirdly, it will provide a strong economic engine. Rivers Casino will pay more than $16 million in annual taxes to the city of Portsmouth, comprised of taxes from the casino and property taxes, sales and use taxes, hotel and entertainment taxes. Through strategic partnerships, the $300 million project cost will directly benefit local and minority businesses, generating more than $200 million annually into the local Portsmouth and Hampton Roads community. Fourth, Rivers is a proud community partner. It's committed to being a good and responsible neighbor for our community, including local residents and nearby businesses. We believe in doing all we can to support and enhance the quality of life in our area and contribute to making Portsmouth a great place to work, visit, and play. And lastly, Rivers Casino Portsmouth will be a great place to play. The casino will be the driver and the engine of the Entertainment District. And it will include over 250,000 square feet of gaming space. The elevations are in your packet, and I think they're scrolling on your screen as I talk. In fact, one of the elevations on the screen in front of you is a very beautiful building, and one I think Portsmouth can be proud of. I'm excited to share some new slides that will show the interior. I'll ask the clerk if she will put up those five or six new interior slides. There we go. Yeah, okay. If you go back to the beginning, please. One more, there you go. So, these are brand-new, hot-off-the-press pictures that were sent out today that shows the interior concepts of what we can expect at the casino. This first slide is a picture of the sports book, and you can see the big screen TVs and the space there. Next screen, please. This is a rendering of a steakhouse bar. You can see the beautiful table settings and views outdoors and the lighting. We expected to look like this. Third slide, please. Here's a canopy dining shot of another dining area. Next. Here's an interior casino view, the casino floor. Next slide. There will be live music. And here's just a rendering of the live music venue. Next. Here's a picture of the promenade. You can see the high-quality materials, the open space, and how pretty it's going to be. And the last slide. Here is a rendering of a representative meeting room. As we indicated earlier, we'd have meeting rooms. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. In conclusion, there are 10 conditions for this use permit. The first condition, on vacating the interior lot lines, has already occurred. Randy had mentioned we performed a VDOT 527 study that addresses road improvements so traffic can be handled and managed. But we also mentioned that we can't move forward until we have Virginia Lottery license. Other than that, the conditions are pretty straightforward. And, Mr. Mayor, the conditions are acceptable to the applicant. Based on the foregoing, I would respectfully ask that you approve UP 2106, and we'll stand by for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers?
Yes, sir, there are. Our first speaker is Mr. Neil Bloom.
Mr. Bloom, sir, are you with us?
I'm really here to answer any questions that haven't been answered.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Ms. Dulcino Miles.
I too am here to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Michael Tobin?
I also am here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, please.
Mr. Randy Royal.
Same, just here for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Sabetta?
Very well done.
I'm sorry, I'm roaring your name.
Do not be sorry. It's okay. I've carried that burden my whole life, so don't worry about it. I'm here to answer questions as well, if you need any answers.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Adolde Kietrowski?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and other neighbors. Since this item is essentially a twin to the item that you already approved, let me just register my objection for the reasons previously stated. And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker is Ms. Emily Reynolds.
Ms. Reynolds, ma'am, are you with us? Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Ms. Reynolds. We can hear you, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Emily Reynolds, and I'm the Executive Director of Governmental Affairs for the Hampton Ridge Chamber. Our chamber serves over 1,200 members, where we are the premier pro-business organization that supports public policies that promote economic development and sets the conditions for all businesses to succeed. On behalf of the Hampton Ridge Chamber, I am pleased to offer our support for the use permit application for a casino gaming establishment. We truly believe this will be an economic development opportunity to the Portsmouth area. Rivers Casino, and I know you've heard these numbers numerous times, but again, you know, just being able to bring more than 1,300 permanent jobs, create more than 1,400 construction-related jobs, and then pump more than $200 million into the local Portsmouth and Hampton Ridge economy annually is just significant, with significant positive impact. So, again, all of these reasons, we ask that the council votes in favor for this application. And I appreciate your time this evening and consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Are there any other speakers? Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Hearing none, then this public hearing is now closed. Members of council, is there any additional discussion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you for all of the speakers. I mean, they have come with facts, with information. We've seen, we've heard. We know the referendum has passed overwhelmingly. There's been a lot of work put into this, a lot of effort, a lot of energy. I think our Portsmouth citizens are waiting this. And it's a no-brainer for those who have heard the information. So, I'm in favor of it, and if we're ready for a motion, I move to approve.
Segue.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No. No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have come to item UP-21-07. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the caption? Or read, excuse me, read the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. UP 21-07 Victory Village. Stephen Romine, on behalf of the Economic Development Authority, is requesting a use permit for a full-service hotel on approximately 38.74 acre property at 3560 Victory Boulevard, Zero Campus Drive, Zero Victory Boulevard, Zero Village Way, 111 Campus Drive, and 3606 Victory Boulevard in the high-intensity mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions deferred from the May 11, 2021 city council meeting. Sir, you're muted.
Once again, this is a public hearing, and the applicant, are you here, sir?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have five minutes. I mean, 10 minutes, sir.
Again, good evening, Mayor Glover, members of the City Council. For the record, my name's Steve Romine, local attorney with an office at 222 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I'll endeavor not to be repetitive on this UP 2107 application. This is a separate request for a use permit for the full-service hotel. As we indicated in the public hearing for the zoning case, the project will be developed in phases. Phase 1 will cover the casino and the event center, restaurants, and other amenities. Phase 2 will include the full-service hotel. As indicated, the western facade of the casino is subsequent to Phase 1, but in the drawing on your slide in front of you, you'll see the high-rise hotel as incorporated into the casino project. That's what you see in front of you on the slide. So, that's what's been planned, and that's what we expect to build. The hotel tentatively will have 250 rooms, where footage is to be determined. It will operate on a 24-hour basis, just like the casino. The overall project is going to generate 1,400 construction jobs, 1,300 permanent jobs, and some of those obviously will be in the hotel as well. We expect the hotel to be less than 200 feet in height. Right now, it's planned at 180 feet. The parking is sufficient to service the hotel pursuant to our plan. And the VDOT 527 study also anticipates road improvements that would address the parking and traffic. The zoning that we submitted has approximately 2,000 parking spaces, so we believe a sufficient amount of parking to handle that traffic. As mentioned, it will be a full-service hotel. We plan at a minimum room service, eating establishments, a lounge with live entertainment, and meeting rooms. There may be other amenities as well. The hotel will approach 150,000 or 160,000 square feet and fully comply with the zoning ordinance. I won't repeat what's in your packet. There's more information about the hotel if you want to look at that. We do have as one of the conditions, the permit expires within six years if the construction has not commenced. I wanted to conclude very briefly this presentation where I started with the first presentation in the slide deck that we provided to you on May 11. We believe this project has something for everyone. It has gaming, it has River Sportsbook, has an indoor and outdoor event center. We really haven't talked about the lawn feature out in front of the lake that's going to provide for outdoor entertainment. There's going to be dining and other activities, and there's going to be a hotel. Secondly, we believe that Rush Street and Portsmouth Gaming provides a great place to work. that Rush Street and Portsmouth Gaming provides a great place to work. People start their careers here, they stay with us for a long time. We've been voted the best place to work and the top workplace in all the markets that we have facilities. We have a strong commitment to diversity. We also believe it will provide a strong engine to the market, economic engine to the market and to Portsmouth. We believe $16 million in annual taxes will come to Portsmouth away of the casino and property taxes and sales and use taxes. We also believe through strategic partnerships that there's going to be a $300 million investment in this project that will generate a $200 million annual impact going forward, which is a very substantial impact for us. Thirdly, we're a proud community partner. We partner with residents and nearby businesses, and we're committed to our communities where we operate. And lastly, we believe that the entertainment district with the casino as one component will provide a great place to play. It's going to provide places to have weddings, outdoor activities, dining, entertainment events on the lawn, a destination for people. So we just think it's going to be an overall terrific place to visit, a terrific place to play. And I know on behalf of Portsmouth Gaming Holdings, we are very excited to become part of the Portsmouth community. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time today. We'll stand by for any additional questions. We ask that you approve UP 2107. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Mr. Neil Bloom.
Mr. Bloom, sir?
Yes, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. D'Alcino Miles.
Here to address questions, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Michael Tobin.
Yes, also to address questions.
Mr. Randy Royal.
Questions only, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Shabeta.
Also here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Adolde Kietrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and other neighbors. So, in previous discussions, Vice Mayor Barnes raised a very important aspect of this particular project. The hotel is part of Phase 2, and the Phase 2 improvements, and I'm reading directly from documentation, in accordance with the development agreement, PGH plans to commence developing the Phase 2 improvements within one year after the occurrence of any of the following. A, PGH's net gaming revenue exceeds $175 million during a consecutive 12-month period, and a casino located within 15 miles is open to public during the entire 12-month period. Or B, PGH's net gaming revenue exceeds $250 million during each of two lately preceding consecutive 12-month periods. So, what you are allowing in adopting this ordinance is you're allowing them to sit on 38 and a fraction acres of prime real estate for up to six years, possibly a little more than six years if they break ground at the end of that six-year period. I have heartburn over that. If this project is a successful enterprise that it's been advertised as by the applicant, if this is something that's going to make a significant difference in the revenue picture for the city of Portsmouth, why do they need such a long window of opportunity before they move forward with a hotel? So I'm opposed to this item on these terms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Our final speaker is Ms. Emily Reynolds.
Ms. Reynolds, ma'am, are you with us?
I am, I am. It was a bit delayed. Again, Emily Reynolds, on behalf of the Hampton Ridge Chamber, I'm pleased to offer our support for this use permit application for the 250-room full-service hotel. The city of Portsmouth would have a world-class entertainment district at this site. We respectfully ask that the council votes in favor for this application as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
Council members, there are no additional speakers on this item.
Then this public hearing is now closed, and are we ready for the question? Is there any discussion from our colleagues on council? Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to ask, Rush Street, when, so when does Phase 2 start again?
I would ask Mike Tobin maybe to jump on that question. Mike, can you handle that?
Yes, thank you. Phase 2, which is the hotel, let me step back for just a second because I do want to make it clear that the 38 acres will be developed entirely when the casino is built in the first phase. The 38 acres is needed for the casino. The hotel occupies a site that is actually within that 38 acres that is approximately a quarter of an acre and will be fully improved with landscaping when the casino is open. The reason for deferring the commencement of the hotel is the hotel is an amenity for the casino, and we want to be sure that we've got the right product for the casino guests that will utilize the hotel because it's part of the package of what we're developing. It's just not something that we believe we know enough about the hotel market to know what to build with Phase 1, but we do want to start the hotel as quickly as possible, which is why we've applied for this conditional use permit today.
I got a question regarding that. You guys are in the casino business, right?
Yes.
Shouldn't you know who's going to be coming to the hotel?
Every market is different. Our guests in each of our casinos are very particular to the communities in which they're located, and we've done the same thing at our other properties. We've developed the hotel on its own time schedule rather than commensurate with the initial construction of the casino property, and that gives us the ability to tailor-made the hotel for each community.
So we're not looking to attract people that normally come to casinos because that's what I thought we were trying to do. I didn't know we were trying to get the new people.
Well, the people that come to the casinos are new people as well. This is a new entertainment attraction for Portsmouth, as it is for every market in which we develop the casinos, and the profile of our guests is very particular to the communities in which the casino was developed.
So, from my understanding, Pittsburgh has been around for 12 years. What kind of hotel did they get?
The hotel is under construction now.
After 12 years?
I can't say for sure that it's 12 years because I haven't been with the company for 12 years. I think the casino is a little less than 12 years old.
Yeah, it was 2009, right, when that casino was built, from the people who knew, who knows from the casino?
Joe, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, it was opened in August of 2009, and we actually started developing the casino in 2014, or the hotel for the casino in 2014, and we had a long process with the city in which we needed the zoning. And just like every other process like we've gone through here, the zoning was not, because the area was an entertainment area that's part of a sports and entertainment authority district, and it needed its own zoning. We went through that process. Then we developed the casino, priced the casino, or sorry, developed the hotel, priced the hotel, were ready to build the hotel, and then we didn't get the votes that we needed from the council to approve the hotel. And it was a constant conversation that we had with the city. They felt that the hotel would be too far away from the convention center to serve the convention center, and we had to do, just like we're doing here, meet with the city council, go through zoning. We finally received the zoning. We finished the development of the documents in 2018, chose our general contractor, which is a local general contractor in Pittsburgh, Massaro Construction, and then we ran into some supply and chain issues. We had to delay, and then we had the pandemic after we started the hotel. So right now, as it sits, sir, we have four floors completed, slab and steel and everything that we were doing, and then the pandemic hit and we had to shut down because the state of Pennsylvania shut down construction. Then we finally got the okay to continue construction, and we wanted to make sure that the property was ready for the hotel, and because we were not taking a loan for that hotel, we were paying for that hotel out of the property operating cash. We needed the operating cash to come back into the coffers of the casino so we could finish paying for it, and now we're back in construction. Michael, tell you, we have re-energized the construction company, same local firm, working with local minority vendors to help us build the hotel. We have had many conversations with a gentleman that's on the city council of Pittsburgh, Jake Wheatley, and we work with him and his team to make sure that it is a very diverse, inclusive project, but we are back in action. We're building it, and I believe we will be ready to open that in about 12 to 13 months. But unfortunately, the process in Pittsburgh took longer than any of us wanted it to take because we had to get different zoning and we had to get approval from the city council, just like we are here. So while on paper it may look like it's 10 to 12 years, but it really wasn't. We started this work when Mr. Bloom okayed us to build the hotel in 2014, and that's just how long the process took.
No, it took a while. But so when is our hotel going to be built?
Joe, you're on mute. Are you talking?
Mr. Bloom, you're muted.
I see Neil. Neil's trying to talk. Neil, you're on mute.
After we complete the casino and we judge the market, and also I should tell you that we also look at what impact the hotel may have on the other hotels in the market. In this case, there's one hotel in particular. We would then start construction and know exactly what size hotel we would want to build. But we will, we will end up getting a hotel as part of this project, and it'll be right-sized, and we're very optimistic that it'll be successful.
So we don't have an estimate of when the hotel will be built?
I think I already said that after we complete the casino...
Oh, you didn't give me an estimate timeframe of when it'll be built. You just gave me something else. I'm asking for estimate timeframe. Is ours going to take 12 years, too, or was it six?
If I may, I think you know that in the development agreement, there's a four-year timeframe for the construction of the hotel, and one of the reasons we've applied for the conditional use permit with this application is so that we can move as quickly as possible. If we did not apply for the conditional use permit with this application, we estimate it would take approximately a year to go through the same process of getting a conditional use permit approved, which would delay the hotel. So we're doing this now so that we're ready to start as quickly as the market allows the hotel to proceed.
Well, the agreement says that four years, after four years, if you guys don't build the hotel, that we can lease the land for you guys and find someone to build it ourselves. It doesn't say that you're going to build it in four years. Is that correct?
That's correct, but the answer is the agreement is what it states. I can't change the terms of the agreement.
Oh, no, no, I definitely know that. You guys' job is to make sure that you look out for the benefit of the casino. As council people, we're supposed to look out for the city, so I'm not mad at you about that.
Are we ready to move forward with the question? Are you ready to call the roll? Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Vice Mayor Barnes was saying as well. You know, I think we were just looking for ETA, just being that the circumstances in our locality, in our area, our region, would not, is getting new casinos, and we're just, we're just trying to ask the questions because if you guys want to be a part of this community, we know that a hotel will make this casino successful. So in all aspects, I think we are asking these questions because we want it to be successful, and being that the new information is out that a casino will be coming 12 minutes away, 12 miles away, we are thinking that you guys will probably be coming to the table with a new plan, and I spoke to the EDA, and they said that they did talk to you, and we were looking forward for a new ETA or a new plan for today.
Councilwoman Lucas...
Oh, sorry, ma'am. Are we getting a new ETA? Are we getting a new ETA?
I mean, it sounds like, sir, based responding to the question, we have Councilwoman Lucas Burke who is there, and she has a question on the floor.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and direct it to Mr. Tobin. Are we getting a new ETA of what possibly can come to this project with this hotel?
We can't give you any different information than we've just told you tonight. Our goal is to be as successful as you want us to be. We're in this together. There's a great benefit economically to the community for a successful casino and hotel. We have no incentive not to do something that's going to be successful, so I hope you believe that we have a common interest here in making this the most successful casino in Virginia.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm calling for the question, mayor. Well, not the question, I like to move...
Well, we already have a motion. I can't. No, no, we don't have a motion in a second, so the question...
Move adoption.
Second.
Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We are now closing the use permit part of the public hearings. We're now moving to the city manager's report. Item 21-153, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we're considering tonight?
Yes, sir. Just before we start on that item, is it possible we can take a two-minute break?
Why don't we recess for three minutes and reconvene in three minutes? Recession. Back to order. We've now moved to city manager's report, item 21-153, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation, a donation in the amount of $150 from Jirthers, Inc., and appropriated seed funds to the FY 2021 Grants Fund for used by the Department of Social Services to support operations of the services intake unit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are needing of a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, were there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Any further discussion by my colleagues on council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item twenty-one dash one five four. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance returning to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting thirty thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. An appropriating said amount in the FY twenty twenty-one grants fund for use by the hazardous materials emergency response team.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Any further discussion by council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item twenty-one dash one five five. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we're considering.
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting five hundred thousand dollars in funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation. And appropriating said amount to the West Norfolk Road Economic Development Access Road Project in the FY twenty-two thousand twenty-two capital improvement fund budget.
Council, council members, we're in need of a motion in a second.
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 Madam Clerk, were there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Any additional questions or discussions from council?
Yes, sir, mayor, can the uh city manager just elaborate some on what this is?
Madam Manager? You have the floor, man.
Sorry. Which one are we on?
We are on item twenty-one dash one fifty-five. It's the, accepting the ordinance for the five hundred thousand in funding.
I'm going to defer to Deputy City Manager Baldwin.
Thank you, City Manager, I think we're gonna need to get Mr. Wright to come online to go through the details of that specific application. That's been going on for some period of time and I don't have the uh the details right in front of me tonight. I will see if I can get hold of him.
Should we just defer to next meeting?
We can definitely do that if that's the desire to do that, I'll postpone it to later on where we can get information on it.
Um and looking at the, the meeting notes, um there's, if you click on that link, it gives you a lot of details about um the item, um.
Motion to defer to next meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I can, I can address that, my apologies.
I'll take my motion back.
I'm sorry, uh looking at the discussion on this item, this relates to certain portions of the West Norfolk Road were identified as needing improvements to fully support the lineage project. The road improvements will benefit existing and future businesses in the industrial corridor. The road project was scoped and submitted to VDOT for evaluation under the EDA program. VDOT recommended the project to Commonwealth Transportation Board for approval. The CDB approved the funding for the project. The project award is six hundred and fifty thousand with five hundred thousand of those funds coming from the Commonwealth and one hundred and fifty thousand coming from the city. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the delay.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second for adoption.
Any speakers, Madam Clerk, for this item?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We are now come to item twenty-one dash one five six and Madam Clerk, would you please read that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting five million nine hundred fifty thousand dollars in funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation and appropriating said amount to the George Washington Highway Corridor Improvements Project in the FY twenty twenty-two capital improvement fund budget.
Is there a motion or second? I mean, we're needing, in need of a motion in second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Are we ready for the question? Uh please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item twenty-one dash one five seven and Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we're considering.
Yes, sir, a resolution approving the Community Planning and Development Twenty Twenty Two Annual Action Plan of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia and authorizing the city manager to file documents required to obtain the city's community planning and development grant entitlements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we're in need of a motion in a second.
Move for approval.
For approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item twenty-one dash one fifty-eight and Madam Clerk, please read the resolution we're considering.
Yes, sir, a resolution to request a waiver from the State Board of Elections to allow for the continued administration of existing split precincts for any election held in twenty twenty-one.
Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any speakers for this item, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've now come to, to the agenda item of new business. Item twenty-one dash one five nine, boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward for council's consideration?
Yes, uh we have a host of appointments, um I'm gonna solicit it. Some of my council members helped for two names, um but I'm gonna start off with um our first one. And I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do appointments and reappointments to that same board um as I go along. So the first one is behavior healthcare, um being appointed is Ms. Angela Hollinsworth. We are reappointing Charlene Shevis, Eric Perriman and Maria Shepherd, Marie Shepherd. Um Board of Zoning Appeals, we're appointing Gary Bunty. Um for Community Criminal Justice Board, we're appointing Tanisha Noble, well, I'm sorry, I should say recommended. Um Tanisha Noble, Shakira Thomas, um Intern Police Chief Scott Burke. Um this is the one I probably gonna need help from you, um Councilwoman um Lucas Burke. Um that, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Colonel.
Vergakis.
Thank you. Uh Sheriff, um Marvin Waters, um our public offender, um Alithia Mace, did I get that right? Um and then we're gonna, we're reappointing, rec- re- recommending reappointment for Catherine Groom, Roxy Holder, Pamela Littlehill, Johnny Morrison and Mindy Orange. Um for Community Policy and Management Team, um Miss Sarah Rogers Ghana and Latanya Page. For History Commission, Janoa Everett, Lakeisha Hicks, Cindy Nichols and Melissa Williams. For Parks and Rec, Roger Smith and Josephine Bamberg. For Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, Andre Williams. Um for Senior Service of South Virginia Board, we're reappointing Ms. Lambrouly. For Social Services Advisory Commission, we're reappointing Shalithia, Shalinda Miller. For Supplemental Retirement Board, Karen Savage. For Tidewater Community College Board, Ms. Lindsay Anderson. Um Ron Grant and reappointing Lynn Clements. For Tidewater Youth Service Services Commission, we're reappointing Ms. Pamela Littlehill. Um for Towing Advisory Board, reappointment, Robert Baldwin, Michael Feen, Nathaniel Hawks, Kenneth Strickland and lastly, West Wetlands, reappointment of Ellen Chromstock and Douglas Union.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Barnes, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item twenty-one dash one six zero, items submitted by council members. Uh council members, do you have any items to submit? Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Well, first, I just wanna give a shout out to my newly fourteen-year-old daughter today, today is her birthday. So I wanna give her a shout out. Um.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Please listen, I just told, I just told um mom to get up there and let her listen. Um next, I'm gonna give a shout out to um Lisa Graham and Siobhan Brown Daughtry, Daughtry. Um black business owners who just opened, um well, they expanded their um business nails to see and more. It's located at twenty-six sixteen Airline Boulevard. Um I was able to attend the ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting ceremony um with uh mayor and Councilman Chris Woodard and Lisa Lucas, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Um also wanna give a shout out to Portsmouth Parks and Recreation, the Portsmouth Police Department uh for their lunchtime bike ride that our mayor and Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke participated in. And um last week, I attended the um business, um the Small Business Award and we had a few businesses that actually won a, an award. Um for the Regional Business of the Year, we have Total Business Solutions, who's located on Portsmouth Boulevard. Uh for Nonprofit of the Year, we had Mercy Drops Dream Center. Um so very um excited about that and proud for them. Um we also had um Bloom that was, basically, they won the award for Newcomer of the Year. Um then I attended the Teacher of the Year Ceremony where I wanna give a shout out to Mr. Michael Horton, who won Citywide Teacher of the Year. Um last, um lastly, I wanna give a shout out to uh Economic Development Department who opened up our new work center, um that's gonna provide training for Portsmouth people. Um and it's, and it's all free, it's gonna prepare them for the jobs that's gonna be coming to Portsmouth and basically all over. So I'm excited about that. And lastly, to our city manager, um when driving around the city, um we have a really big issue with our grass. Um specifically, the Greenwood location where um wh- what is it, Ryan Homes? Um the grass is, is about as tall as me. Um I know I reached out to you about that, but it, it, it really, and, and that's not the only location. Um but it's really starting to make our city look horrible. Um can we really get on them about doing something with that, them and a, a couple of other locations that I'll send you? But it's, it's really, um cuz you know, if it's, if it's the citizens, by now, they would have been fine or something. So we really have to do something about this was going on in our city. That, that grass on Greenwood specifically has been as tall as me for months now.
Thank you, I know we're working on it.
You're muted, man.
Yes, thanks um for bringing that up again, I know that we're working on it and I, if you can send me the other list, I'll make sure to report back on what we're doing specifically.
Okay, thank you. And that's all that I have, mayor, appreciate the opportunity um to talk and my daughter said thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for putting in all that work and we certainly recognize uh your daughter's achievement on a new birthday. And let's give a round of applause for all those wonderful things that the Vice Mayor just talked about. For all of our Portsmouth citizens, all the achievements, uh we are proud of our citizens in the city of Portsmouth and it shows. And we just wanna continue to elevate and, and celebrate the successes. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, I um, I would like to just um, I'll see if the city manager could have someone to look into um a couple of issues that came to my um attention uh this week. One is um the Hattonville community, I don't know what the city does about putting speed bumps in communities. I know a couple of communities have asked, but there's um an area right there at Lay Road where there's a, a play park uh where the cars kinda come zooming around uh the area. And there's another community across the street, um right on the side where City Trends and Roses is. They have speed bumps in their community, but Hattonville uh does not. So there's been a request for that right at Lay Road um in the bend where the play park is. And then there was another citizen complaint that there's um a large um manhole um in the road at uh Belafonte and Roosevelt. Um and the, the neighbors um in that community have complaints that it's been there over a couple of months. Um just wanna have that looked in, I don't, I know that they do repaving um of the streets at certain times, but um this is an issue that they saying they having to really uh duck um those potholes in the street there.
Okay, we will definitely follow up.
Thank you.
Ma- mayor, can I say one thing to go along with uh Councilwoman?
Absolutely, sir, you have the floor.
Um also, um in the Waterview um neighborhood, uh I believe it's Shenador. Um I, I mentioned it in our last meeting, um it's, it's been an issue that they've been having for years with the cars speeding um and, and going through there, um we, we got a um email from Ms. Kathy Drew uh regarding this. Um and it's, it's really something that they've been, I mean, it's, it's been at least five years since I've been heard about it. So I think it's time that we, we address that issue with them. And like I said, I did mention it last meeting, but I, I would like to actually get an update hopefully next meeting.
Yes, I'll send a report back actually before next meeting as to where that is, cuz I, I do recall that.
Thank, thank, thank you all and, and I would like to add something. This Monday, May thirty-first, uh our nation will celebrate. This Monday, May thirty first, uh, our nation will celebrate a very solemn day, Memorial Day. And I would ask that each of us, our citizens in the city of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council, take a moment to reflect and honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy. And I'd like to add with a quote. Our flag does not fly because the wind moves it. It flies with the last breath of each soldier who died protecting. So to the men and women and all of those who gave their lives so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy, I ask that each of us, citizens and my colleagues on council, take a moment this weekend as you celebrate with your families to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Mister Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, very well said. Uh, couple things, the credit historic marker. That has been going on for some time. Uh, do we have an update on when that will be placed in the square?
I will definitely include that in the report back as well.
Okay.
The stats.
Also, uh, Hedges Road Lane. Um, that gets a lot of bus traffic. And a lot of traffic, period, because it's between Riverside, uh, connects Riverside and, uh, Twin Pines. That road is in desperate need of repaving. There's, uh, potholes, there's pavement, uh, cracking. Uh, needs to be looked at, uh, and, and I think it needs to be repaved myself.
Okay. I love it.
Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just wanna make sure that I, um, highlight this individual. It was, um, she was Teacher of the Year in twenty twenty, and, um, as you and, um, council, I mean Vice Mayor Barnes, we all attended the, uh, teacher ceremony, Teacher of the Year Ceremony. Um, her ceremony was cut short due to the pandemic. So, um, I just wanna make sure that, uh, the council can acknowledge her as well for being a, uh, Citywide Teacher of the Year, that's Miss Epiphany Hill for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. So I just wanna make sure we gave her some accolades.
Thank you, sir. Doctor Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You were mentioning about, uh, Monday, uh, the Memorial Day. Uh, also, I just want to, uh, bring, uh, to our attention as well as this, uh, citizens and those listening that, um, Monday, May thirty first also coincides with another very solemn um, occasion in our country, and that is, uh, the Greenwood massacre of May thirty first, nineteen twenty one. Uh, this is the centennial of the occurrence of one of the, uh, most tragic incidences in American history where, uh, a black community was totally destroyed. Um, Greenwood is also the name of one of the major streets that runs through, uh, Cablo Manor. And so, uh, I would like to, uh, just bring that to our attention as well because on that Memorial Day celebration on Monday, uh, as you reflect on Greenwood, there were many African American men who had fought, uh, during World War One. And, uh, actually, uh, were trying to defend that community from a white mob. And, uh, were killed, uh, some in their uniforms. And so, uh, just want to make sure that as we, so, uh, commemorate Memorial Day, that also we recognize the Greenwood occasion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for adding that history. We have now item twenty one dash one six one, Report on Pending Items. Ms. Jones, are there penny, any pending items?
Um, one, in light of the changes in the C D C guidance as well as, um, anticipated changes to the governor's order, I just wanna remind those that are listening and the city council of tentative reopening dates, um, for the city. Um, the first date being on June the seventh. We plan to open city public facilities, including but not limited to City Hall. And we will be following C D C guidelines. The C D C guidelines only requires the mask uh, for those that have not been vaccinated. Additional new signage will be deployed and all building clothes signs, as an example, will be removed. On June the twenty second, it is anticipated the first in-person, uh, city council meeting will occur. And then the next date, um, we anticipate that the governor will remove the emergency order as of June thirty. And then following that, we will reopen all, um, meetings for boards and commissions as of July one. And again, these are subject, uh, to the governor's modifications remaining as we know of them today. If anything changes, you will be advised. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor? Doctor Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, are we planning on, um, with the in-person, are we planning on continuing to, uh, use, uh, virtual for citizens who may not be able to come to meetings to, um, be able to ask questions? Will that could be continued?
I would love to be able to continue that, but I'm going to need to consult with I T to, to ensure that that's, uh, something that we have available. Um, as of yet, I do not know the status of that, but that is definitely something, um, that I would hope that we could do going forward.
And, and my second issue, um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, um, have those funds been allocated yet, or are we still waiting?
We're still waiting for the guidelines and the amount that we're going to receive. It's anticipated that we're going to receive about fifty three million dollars. Um, but we have not received any direct guidance as of, as of this point. Uh, where staff is starting to prepare, um, recommendations and options so that we can, uh, inform the council once we get the, um, requirements that we have to adhere to. Uh, but we don't wanna wait for that. We wanna try to plan ahead so that once we get it, we can come to you with some recommendations.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you. And, um, we had mentioned in one of our last meetings about the, uh, homeless shelters, the discussion about the, uh, expanding those services and what's up. Are we gonna get, uh, some more update on that?
We are. And as a matter of fact, that's one of the things that we were hoping to use those funds for to be able to do that. I have definitely assigned, um, Director Pam, Pamela Littlehill, uh, to head a committee and work with other homeless, um, providers to ensure that we can come forth with a plan as to how we can expand and address those concerns.
Okay, and, um, last thing, in our previous, in our earlier meeting, uh, the president of Bar and Secure, Ms. Bren, um, mentioned about, um, where we discussed the issue about internships with our, our high school students. Is that something that you can follow up on?
Absolutely. I'm happy to do so.
All right. You know that's right in line with some of the youth.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've now come to item twenty one dash one six two, which is non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mister Felton Ellington. I'm not sure if he is.
Mister Ellington, sir? Mister Ellington, sir?
It does. Uh, the next speaker is Jason Ward.
Mister Ward, sir? Mister Ward?
And the last person I had registered is Miss Mae Breckenridge Haywood, and I don't see her either. Just for the record, we did have an issue with, um, speakers getting on tonight, so that may have had something to do with it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
There are no additional speakers, sir.
Council members, seeing no additional business for our consideration, you're now adjourned, and please be safe and have an enjoyable Memorial Day weekend.
All right.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Good night.
All right.